Jill Mann from Mann and Mann, PC, representing Ralph DiGiorgio.
Correct.
DiGiorgio and Thomas O'Connell are here along with Rich Williams from Williams and engineering. For an informal discussion regarding a potential project at Carriage Pines, otherwise known as formerly the Raleigh Country Club, at 237 Dodge Road. And the informal discussion, just for the people, if they're here for that, is mainly an informative presentation by the potential buyers, proponents, applicants, whatever role they are at this point, consultants. It's extremely early in the process. I hope at the end if there's some input, but it would be limited because the next step would be a formal application and obviously site plan review and formal hearings that will be posted in paper. We're hoping to help as a board, have the board discuss what we hear tonight. We were going to have our planning consultant here as well. Obviously, there's a lot of experience in the board in the former project, which was, everyone knows what that was. That's not really relevant now because we have a new one. So we'll just let them, I think this is a very valuable thing for people to, so we know which direction to go and we can help guide the potential applicants or developers. Go ahead.
Good evening, Jill Mann here on behalf of the applicant, which was just stated for the record. Here with me this evening is Rich Williams from Williams and Sporages. Basically, as you said, we're just trying to get a feel for the board's comfort level with regard to the existing special permit.
I'll put it over here.
And how in fact we should seek our approvals. Presently, there is an outstanding special permit that has actually been accorded to the registry of deeds which grants the-
Has it not expired?
Well, no, it doesn't because you have Massachusetts Permit Extension Act. So by its terms, it will expire in 2012.
Oh, is this the recent legislation?
The recent legislation applies to any permit that would be in effect from 2008 through 2010. And this would actually be governed by that provision, that extension, right?
Yeah, for example, orders of conditions where-
Exactly.
-two years.
Yeah, no, I remember reading something about that.
What happens with the linkage we had to the town center? Is that smaller?
Well, that's a good question.
That was directly related to this.
It is, and that's why kind of we did list some of the differences.
And plus, it's a totally different project, so.
Oh, completely. Yeah, the only reason I'm saying, you know, that there is an existing special permit as of record is because a lot of times the boards don't like to have multiple special permits on record, and that's what presently will be or could be the case. So originally, I intended potentially just filing for a new special permit, but given some time to think about it, I thought that it would be best to bring it before the board during an informal discussion and say to you, you know, whatever the board pleasure, however, it may be possible that this board would prefer to see me do an amended and restated special permit so that I reflect directly back on the other special permit and then do a brand-new site plan approval because of the changes that are represented in the actual ground. The reason for that is because a special permit for an open space residential development, as you well know, really permits you to go outside of the standard developments, i.e. subdivisions, and to create otherwise a cluster division for which you need site plan approval always, which is actually the details of the construction. So the site, the special permit really says, okay, look, you have authority to enter into this type of development and proceed in how many of the lots, because you have to go through the whole concept process or yield plan. So we didn't know if, basically, this project's already gone through the yield plan. It's already been determined how many lots can be achieved. It's already been determined what would be the parameters for the maximum number of development units or units to be developed. This plan, I'm sorry, this is a tight spot, but I'm going to come over here. I did email the plan out, which is just a concept plan. It has no real detailed, yeah, oh, good, good. It has no specific details with regard to the infrastructure, other than demonstrating where in fact we would venture the property and how many homes we'd have. Under the prior plan, the major differences are pretty clear. One, we are not going to 54 units, we would like to have 45. The other major difference is that instead of having the open space that would be dedicated to conservation, you would prefer to retain and are seeking to retain the golf course and to just simply modify it somewhat to be able to accommodate homes that would be part of the golf course. And that's what you can see on the plan in front of you. And we understand there are a number of, if you will, conditions on the other permit that maybe have permitted an increase in density, i.e. the development of the town center, which had on top of it, I think it was the affordable units, is that how it was developed? It wasn't real clear from the permit, because I know I need to look at the application as well. And I understand clearly that would be one of the terms of modification. There is no requirement, it's existing. We don't have any right to get any type of density bonus for it because it's not ours, obviously. And as you can see, we only did the 45 homes, and it is going to be single and duplex. We would use sort of a more of a blended approach instead of just having all duplexes. And it would be, it would be a 55 and older development, though. And again, would be benefited by the golf course in the back of the property. One of the changes to the golf course is actually going to be a small extension to the existing clubhouse to accommodate a small restaurant, but there is a restaurant structure. Richie, help me, right here, right? Is that the-
The restaurant is right.
Okay, it's right in the middle.
I'm sorry, where is it?
The restaurant is right in the middle of-
Remember, it's at the end of the ninth hole presently.
Exactly, yeah.
Just beyond the green of the ninth hole.
Right, that makes sense because here it is.
On the outer side of-
Right here is where the restaurant exists presently.
Oh.
Right in the middle of where we-
Oh, where it is presently, okay.
Right, the function hall restaurant.
Exactly, so that's going away. That'll be raised under our proposed use. And then just a small extension, which is shown in your plan, where you can see the very small addition to the existing clubhouse, which would basically be a restaurant to service those people and patrons of the golf course. Again, every other requirement in the special permit would be on, we understood that there were certain elements that we would clearly observe. For example, you know, it's going to be a 55 and older subdivision. We understand that we need to ensure that there's proper site access, I mean, site distance, and I think there might have been some issue with regard to some curves in the street itself, because there was something about having to straighten out an S curve on Daniels and Dodge.
Right.
And then one of the other things was simply to provide the town with a seven-foot sliver of land along Dodge Street so that in the future, to the extent the town so desired, it could broaden its right-of-way and maybe increase, I would assume, increase the pavement with, of the street, Dodge Street. I mean, I think that's basically the overall presentation of our concept without getting into, I guess, engineering parts of it, and Richie can handle that to the extent you have any questions. But what we'd love to do is engage the board in a discussion with regard to how to proceed under your bylaw, whether you would like us, it's still a de novo review, by the way, we're recognizing it's a complete substantial change to the special permit, so we're not seeking minor modification or anything like that. We recognize what it would be, but that some of the basic questions of the special permit would have already been answered, that being the yield plan has already established the maximum number of units so that that process did not have to be revisited. That would be one of the things that wouldn't have to be. Other than that, we'd have to go through the whole process again with you, because we have to modify many, many of the terms of the special permit, because we are also modifying in total, if you will, the site plan approval, because we are changing the composition of the rear of the lots and the open space.
What do you feel, I mean, is the advantage of you going for a substantial modification of the existing special permit for Windover versus just applying what?
Not duplicative of any effort with regard to the yield plan, to be honest with you. I mean, it's already been done. So to have to go back and revisit that whole thing would just be to recreate exactly that which had been done previously, because nothing has changed with regard to the yield plan, nothing. So that would be one advantage, and the board would not have to-
Well, my preference is that since these projects are so different, that it would be preferable to have a clean slate and just for you to start over from scratch. However, unless there's some reason why the yield plan is no longer valid, which I don't think there is, I think the board could just accept that. You could just, you know, you could resubmit that into the record and we would-
Right, just incorporate it.
Right, and I don't think we would have to revisit that.
That's fine.
And send our engineer out to do protests and things of that nature.
That was really the true and only, I believe, advantage of restating, other than, again, a lot of times boards don't like to have, I mean, it was recorded, so a lot of times boards don't like to have a special permit out there, but-
Now, your range where the houses are going to be, where would the back of Leachon Field be and where?
The Leachon?
Yeah, you have the primary, but usually you have to back up.
Richie knows where the, where's the reserve field for the-
Same area.
Well, it hasn't been designed, but it would be in the same vicinity as the, as the primary.
Okay. Because that's originally going to be water retention area in the original plans. So do you have to do more water retention for this particular plant? Because it seems like houses are right where a lake would have formed and rained.
Well, we haven't done any, any design. This is, this is just a concept. We would have to make provisions to accommodate drainage and septic, and we know that we have fewer units, so the septic system will be smaller than the other, the other design. The system that I've shown there is actually a little bigger than the original design, so.
How much have you looked at the Windover approved site plan?
Oh, I've seen it.
So in designing this, you've taken all of those contours, all of that excavation out. Have you taken much of that into account in terms of where you put your septic and previous perks and?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I mean, we're, we have existing soil data, so, you know, we've taken that into account. Has it been designed? No. But generally, we know, we know where it needs to go.
Just a question, a legal question. The covenants or the conservation restrictions that were consummated with, I believe, Greenbelt, right? For the back, how do you want to do that? Are those all undone?
They really, they really were only conditioned. So what you've done was when you granted your approval, I didn't see any, anything of record that shook the conservation restriction in place. That usually will happen afterward, after you've had the site plan approved and, I mean, site plan, I think the site plan is of record, isn't it? I mean, site plan was. But there hadn't been any changeover, so the conservation restriction, I didn't see one of record.
And the golf course is still operating, and it wouldn't have been allowed to under that restriction.
But you did negotiate it, and you had completed it.
It was contingent upon the construction.
The economy was south right as they were being approved, as I recall.
Paul Snow and wants 55 and older homes anyways.
Well, that's another issue.
Who else can ask about next? Because have you done any market research, if anyone wants this?
Yeah, you know, actually, I do understand that there's been a lot of 55 and older, but they're not as stymied as you would think, and actually, there's been a resurgence of interest, because we have, I have some clients who actually do sell some 55 and olders, and they are selling in certain areas. You know, you did have, when the economy first plummeted, had a complete, nobody was selling condos anywhere, at any level. But now you're seeing more of an interest yet again.
We have a lot of developers trying to get out of the 55 and older restrictions.
In fact, we've had like three of them come in to about six years, and none of them have been developed in Raleigh. That's why I say I'm not entirely sure if people want it in this particular town.
Yeah, I mean, again, you know, I believe we have done some market research to indicate that there has been an additional resurgence of interest.
And some of those situations could have been caused by people getting in, their purchase prices not being where they needed to be because it was in the old economy, so.
I know, it's odd to say.
Well, there are, there are people who have done them successfully. The one in Topsfield is just-
And he's selling units.
-plugging right along, but he has a great track record.
He has a good track record, he builds nice products.
Well, the Pengeberry Farms in Raleigh is successful, went through some rough patches, I think, but it seems to be doing well now.
It's doing very well right now.
The optimistic point of Pengeberry, though, is it's a quarter of a mile from 95, so that people can go, it's, you know, location is part of the-
I personally have every faith you wouldn't be able to sell them, but we can continue further that, you know, to the applicants.
I think one of the things Caldwell Farms has in Old English Village or Square or whatever it is, it's imagination, and I think the quality of the architecture, landscaping. We have some buffering issues with neighbors.
That's my, I think my primary objection, or maybe objection is too strong a word, but concern is the, looking at the plan, I see a lack, lack of imagination. Basically, you have a very small building envelope that you can build in, and you're proposing to fill it with, with houses. And to me, that's not the concept of an OSRD. An OSRD is creative design, I don't see that this is creative at all. We went through, you know, just, we went through this before where Windover, their initial plan was to keep the country club. And I can't remember, I don't know if anyone does, how many units they were proposing, but I don't think-
Was it 54?
No, no, before the 54 plan. The 54 was without, without the country club, so that gave them much more space to play with.
A lot more space.
I think it was 40, but I could be wrong, with the country club. And, you know, we went through this, spent a lot of time on it, and it just didn't work out. And Windover just backed out of that and went, you know, decided to end, end the country club.
Part of it was the contours and where the houses would be placed, the water reserve area, stuff right here where they have houses done. They found they were squeezed, and they couldn't even fit the stuff in with the golf course and inside area.
Right, I mean, I think, look at this, you've got rows of houses, basically. How big are these single-family blocks?
This is so preliminary, I mean, this really was meant to just show you, we want to retain the golf course, not, there was no imagination used, we weren't, I'm not trying to be, I don't know how to say it, other than Richie was trying to get on paper the golf course, the number of lots, a number of homes we'd like to see, a potential, but this is not, this by no means is the plan that we plan on submitting to you. This was more just to stimulate discussion, to say to you-
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
We're discussing, you know, we've seen-
And I appreciate, though, knowing, look, you know what, put more effort, and this is what we want.
But we've seen this plan before, and the problem was they couldn't get the contours and stuff laid out with that many houses. That's why they had to reduce it and find second-
I think it was fewer houses. And there were no single-family dwellings in the Windover plan, so I think that makes it even more difficult.
Which one?
The first Windover plan.
Had what?
Had no single-family dwellings, it was all duplexes. This is mostly single-family dwellings, right?
Would it make, would it make sense? You know, based on this, and if you were to go on an application, I mean, you have to go back and start looking at the economics of the whole situation. But I mean, you're hearing from OSRD and the creativity that should be, I mean, it would make, instead of like, we get these concept plans with maxed out, and then you go through a long, you know, intensive process that we, that we can move along. But wouldn't it make sense to get it right as much as you can the first time in your application?
Absolutely, that's why we're here.
Really give it some thought, you're getting, you know, in terms of-
If we weren't going on that avenue, we would just have filed the plan.
And this is why this is-
That's why it's good, yeah, so, I mean, you're getting the feedback.
Getting it right, I mean, I think, I think someone needs to say, and I don't mind saying it, getting it right is reducing the number of units.
We appreciate that, that's what we want.
And also, we have an architect on the board, you know, private architect.
I've worked with you before.
Getting the design right. In the village, for example, off of 1A, that was started out with so many units, you know, over 55, what's it called, the village green or whatever.
Oh, right.
Then it became just market units, you know, general public. It started out, looked like military barracks, and then it ended up in nice cave style. So, I mean, to get that, that took a long time and a lot of, I thought, unnecessary engineering expense back and forth, whereas, you know.
One of the reasons it took a longer time is it didn't have the creativity from the beginning. And thinking about creativity-
We're imploring you to do that.
No, actually, Ralph can talk to you about that.
I'm Ralph DiGiorgio, I'm the developer. The reason we wanted to meet is to hear this type of feedback. And again, the units that you see up there are not the full plans and the shapes of them. We're looking, we're looking at those single units to be single-story, single-unit villages, one level, 2,000 square feet, very high ceilings, very open concept, very, very nice, open, bright spaces. We found in our research that a lot of people, 55 and older, don't necessarily like all duplex components. Some don't mind, some like the single family. They've been living in a home 3,000 square feet, 3,600 square feet, for 40, 50 years. They have all this furniture. They want to settle down in a nice one-level home, and they want to be able to keep the dining room set that they've had for 40 years. So they want to have a nice big family room, nice big living room, open kitchen, open concept, master suite on the first floor, second bedroom, second bath, laundry facilities, one level, two-car garage. And that's the concept with these villages. Big, open, airy, nice, one-level homes that are very, very comfortable to live in, very beautiful, very spacious, overlooking the golf course. It's a nice setting, it really is a nice setting. So we have done research, we've looked at a lot of projects, we've done a lot of projects. So we kind of know what direction we want to go in. We do have the architects working on the floor plans currently and designs of the units. We want this to be a very, very nice, beautiful development. You have the horse farm across the street. We want to incorporate, you know, the style coming in, some horse rail coming in, nice stone walls, and really complement the whole area, because it is, it is a beautiful area. And the first thing that attracted me to the site was the fact that I think the golf course is beautiful. I think it's an asset to the community and the development as well. So as far as your feedback, it's well received, and we really do want to hear as much from you as possible, because we're not looking to say, hey, listen, we want to, you know, jam this down the board's throat. We want, it has to work for us, it has to work for the community as well. So we're looking for the feedback, for you to say, you know, this is what we can do. As far as the plan, the spots are the spots. The designs are nothing like that, nothing like that. And once we do file, you know, all the architectural plans and everything will come along with that. But we have done a lot of research with respect to the style, what 55 and older community people are looking for, and it's a nice, it's going to be a nice project. And once we do file, you'll see that we have done our homework.
I mean, in respect to a butters-
Yeah, I was just going to bring up-
In respect to a butters, you know, we worked a long time for vegetative, multi-story vegetative, you know, protection. And you can see right there, that's pretty close to property line, those conceptual porches or whatever they are, you know, decks, there's decks in those duplexes. Literally only, what, 20 feet away from, if I scale it out, Rich, what is it, 20? What's that from property line?
Yeah, it's 20 or 25.
25, I can see, with very little, I can't really picture, I haven't been down there lately.
Big structures, too, so we're talking about duplex being 4,000 square feet.
Yeah. The neighbors, the neighbors spent a lot of time with us on their concern for the houses being so close to their property lines and their homes. So if you're thinking about where you're placing the homes, it would be advantageous for you to make sure that there's plenty of space for the neighbors.
Or if those were singles.
Which way I got pushed out, too.
Yeah, potentially.
If those were singles and not the duplexes right by the property line. I mean, obviously, you have the right within the zoning to do what you want and push what you want, but that's why we're here.
Well, that's, singles is well received, I know, that's-
Well, yeah, and you could, there's a way to even have a larger building if it looked like a farm structure or something like that. But the smaller units, I think, what's the place down in Plymouth? Pine Hills?
Pine House.
They've got some cottages and smaller dwellings like you're describing down there, so. But getting the, and bringing to the meeting the imaginative people who hear what we say will save you time.
A lot of time.
Because that's what took so long on 1A, because there was no imaginative people to leave the tail end.
And they also went down from, what did they start out in terms of the number of units?
45?
45 to 25, right? So while I'm not suggesting that you need to make that kind of reduction here-
We don't know what the right number is here.
That's how we, we were able to make, turn it into, well, it hasn't been built yet, and I don't know frankly if it's ever going to be.
It's a beautiful, it's an approved-
No, that one won't have reviewed, though.
Well, whether it is or doesn't, my point is-
It's an attractive project, yeah.
The way it became an attractive project was the developer cut the number of units essentially in half. And while I'm not suggesting that you need to do that here, I think there, I don't think it's going to work with this many units, I really don't.
All right, so that feedback and additional of the buffer, I mean, I think, if you look at Berry, if you look at Route 1, you know, that, that project, obviously, there's some excellent betterment on Route 1 that they did, you know, with the paving, the double, the turning lanes. They took care of the traffic on Route 1 in and out of that in Topsfield. And also landscaping is pretty spectacular. Not that everybody wants to spend millions of dollars on landscaping, but these are the kind of things that if you take into, that's what probably made that project, you know, go through. Topsfield's tough, but I'm sure it went through fairly expeditiously because the plan is there.
Plan was there, and it was right next to the Topsfield dampers line, so edges.
Still can't stress enough, I don't think if you have an older, they're really going to work in the town for selling it.
Well, that's-
I mean, it's not a concern, but, you know, I hate going through the process of just having that done, you know, that's already been happened on this property once now.
Are you doing that to get some credit in terms of the argument about traffic and services to the community?
Septic design. It helps you with your septic design, right?
Well, only because, yeah, you're entitled to like some sort of a diminution, but we can put a larger system in, so.
I'd almost eliminate that and go for the project as normal development, you know, OSRD, whatever, remove the heat restriction.
Well, I don't know, I have no problem with them doing it.
Well, conceptually, no, it's just, I know in my heart it won't be done. Yeah, there's no need for that, and everyone we've-
Maybe the market is getting better, I mean, I don't know, if we have expertise in that, I mean.
No, and that's their responsibility.
I know, but you look at six years, that's a long time.
Old English Village is building out up there.
Newbury's going, too, yeah.
And it's priced, in this market, this market is price points. You know, five, six, seven years ago, trying to get $650,000, that's, you know, what they were trying to get for these, these units, that just doesn't exist. You have to be in the right price range today. And if you're in the right price range, you know, you'll sell them, between $399 and $450. And that's a very, very aggressive price range.
Talk to the fire department early.
The golf course hopes it, but I still think-
You guys have turned up any other, you know, summary info on any aspect of the project?
Are you thinking of replacing the bridges?
Oh, those, no, the bridges, covered bridges that we talked about.
We've looked at them, the course needs a fair amount of TLC, and that's one of the things that, that we're looking at, you know, what needs to be done on the course.
How big is the restaurant?
It's small.
Looks small.
It's about the size-
Essentially the same size as what they have now?
It's about the size, yeah, the size of that building would about double.
And you're not talking about a function hall of any kind, I mean, so-
No, no, but it would be seating, you know, you'd be able to come in and have a sandwich.
I mean, it's open to the public, but it's essentially the 19th.
It's a real amenity for the people living.
Is it going to remain a public country club?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Primarily, you know, the golf is breakfast, lunch, you know, somewhere for them to come in and have something to eat after playing before and after.
But it will be in accordance with your regulations, which require that the golf course be open to the public.
No, that's right, they do. And with respect to the golf course, we know the condition of the golf course. We have a golf professional on our team who basically handles golf courses. And we've gone through the course, we know what it needs. It's been neglected because nobody really knows what was going to happen with the facility, you know, it was going to be developed, it was going to be closed, it wasn't going to be closed, you know, so the course really hasn't been taken care of. So we, you know, we have someone who's heading up the team to go in there and do a plan as to what needs to be done. We know the covered bridge needs work, I mean, that, we know that. So there are some of the holes need done, the golf cart paths need to be replaced, you know. So there is a list of items that are going to be taken care of to improve the golf course as well.
I don't think your parking lot's going to be sufficient for what you're describing.
The golf course hasn't changed, the parking lot isn't changing at all from where it currently is.
Well, there's law parking in this particular area as well, you know, behind where the restaurant is that you're getting rid of, so you're removing parking, if you're just keeping the golf.
Well, the function hall will be gone. And the restaurant is virtually being cut in half. And the parking lot is not really changing.
I'm just saying, take a look at it, make sure you follow the regulations.
We absolutely will comply with all of the zoning regulations with regard to, you know, having it be a number one. I don't know, probably define it as restaurant under your, under your zoning bylaws and ensure that we have sufficient capacity. I don't know how we end up doing the golf course. Yeah, I don't know how you estimate. I think you actually do, I know there's a way to do it, but we just have to figure it out.
The parking lot's never totally filled for the.
Yeah, we've been out there, you know, when the golf course is filled and.
It's not. The parking lot's not full.
It's just occasionally.
When there's events at the function hall.
There are. That's true, but we're not going to have a function hall. That's.
That'll be eliminated.
No, as David said, that's when it fills up. All right. Has it been good feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to get to and also people, if they can. Any board members? Before I just ask Larry? Any other, any other comments? I think there's been some good ones. Larry?
I guess I would just echo a lot of the things that have been said by members of the board, particularly the four units to the north as their proximity is to the Butters to the north. I think for the long cul-de-sac, as somebody mentioned, not just the fire department, but maybe off of, if we're going to have a long one that might get back out closer to Dodge Road, an emergency access gated or something where we could get in from two ends if they needed to, keep it open. I agree with Cliff. I think as far as the yield plan, I see no need to have to do that over again. So if you're going to rescind the existing permits, do so in such a way as that you rescind them except for the yield plan. The yield plan might not really mean anything when they really get down to looking at how many units they can fit on here, but certainly nothing has changed and there's no need to go out and, you know, do soil tests and all that over again. I also think that that connection that this project had with the town center, something that could be worked out ahead of time, should be worked out ahead of time before, you know, you start doing too many drawings and things like that because it would probably, it might impact this a bit. And to go through the site plan and special permit items one by one and just see if any of them might impact what you're going to do here, you know, for a new project. And then get back, and then get down to a conceptual plan again before you, before Rich goes into any kind of final engineering. But I'm sure that this was put together rather quickly. And I appreciate the fact that the board and myself have a plan to look at rather than just a narrative or a one-page letter. So I think this is, what this has done is to generate some of the questions and concerns and things that the board has made tonight to give the developer that kind of feedback and direction to move forward. But I definitely think that a project like this would benefit from maybe two more conceptual plans or one more modifications, modifications before we get to, you know, the engineered plan.
I think that's a good idea.
I'm all for that.
At least one more anyway.
We want to try to keep it efficient, keep the cost effective. And I like to see the money go into the actual implementation if it's going to happen.
Well, and I would talk to the neighbors. Their number, they showed up for almost a year for every single meeting. So they were very interested.
We intend doing that.
Yeah, I agree. And then when we get into a form, yeah, and I just wanted to ask, anybody come here about this project? Was sorry on that. All right. Would you like to?
Most of the questions were along the north line. So if we could pull those units totally away from that line and find another home for them, other than on the north side of that.
We have an office with office hours. So as you know, when the, when this application comes in, it'll be in the paper. But if you have any questions, please get a contact the office. Marianne Tucksmore.
I just have one, I'm sorry.
I just want to see if there's anyone else who came. No one? Okay. Thanks.
One more question. Are you planning on any affordable units?
I want to go see the, I'm the only member who has not been familiar with the window plan. So I want to go back and look at it through the office, so.
Well, you really need to go back and look at the earlier, the first window.
I'll look at everything if you can find it.
Well, yeah, I think I have it at home. I'll try to look it up. She should have it too. I mean, we should have it in the office. But looking at the second plan isn't, isn't really relevant because it's so different.
Okay.
Well, look at it both ways.
Well, I just want to back myself up on some of the history that all the rest of the members know.
I will direct her to have that available. Good. Are those useful things?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Thanks.
I think we worked on a.
Yeah, something in, what was it, in middle?
Oops.
Hoop specialist, yes.
You and I did, actually.
Yeah, or please, no one else did. That's for sure, huh?
Thanks for coming in.
Now that it's a, it's a manufacturing store, it's like electronic.
Buildings were designed initially anyway.
Well, it wasn't our dealership at some point. And it was a car storage place for like exotic cars. That place has had more permutations of use. Take care. It was good to see you.
Good to see you.
Take care. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Some good flow charts on how do these planning boards interact in the timeline and what complicated things.
How they don't interact.
Flow chart of. You know, what the appeal periods are and so forth. Thank you, Larry. Good to see you, Larry. All right, we're having a continued public hearing for, which was scheduled for eight o'clock, continued public hearing, Leslie Milney at 204 Dodge Road. Just for the background of the board, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. As we know, this project is before, Mr. Graham has submitted a four-page list of comments, engineering review comments. To my knowledge, he has not received responses and/or revised plan. However, I believe based on my input from the conservation administrator Brent Basilek, that a notice of intent was filed, a hearing was held, and the conservation commission closed the hearing last night with a revised plan that I know incorporated at least several of the components. But again, if a representative from, you know, Mr. Scrif or Mr. Page or what wants to elaborate on that, that's fine. Our consulting engineer is here. But just let it be note that Mr. Graham is here without having the benefit of comments coming back to his office or revised plan. But it has been.
Let me stop you because at two-thirty this afternoon, I did get from Bob's office.
And that was.
He emailed a copy of the revised plan and the letter response, so.
Yeah, good. Yeah, because that was also as a result of a call from our office as a courtesy call.
And I did take, have the time this afternoon to get into the response and the plan. So I'm prepared tonight to discuss those with.
That's great. Okay, so.
And there's a reduced copy of the revised plan attached to that letter. I do apologize for the lateness of this. I didn't realize a response and writing was necessary. But we did get it together and I appreciate Larry looking at it so quickly.
And just for the record, normally our office does not engage in reminding the engineers to do this, which is a courtesy because I know that we're very aware of the process that Ms. Milley is going through. And, you know, as this winter gets closer, we're trying as a group of boards to help her come to a conclusion. And I knew that she had received her approval last night. Also, I believe that a stormwater management permit still has to be applied for. So that, just so the board knows that, under the bylaw in town, and that would be applied for and then that would be approved at a subsequent conservation commission meeting in mid-November. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think they already have the paperwork, but you're right, it's not finalized yet.
It has to go before the board.
Right.
Okay. Got some background here, something. Captain, introduce who you are.
So my name is Bob Griffin. I'm with Griffin Engineering, Beverly, Mass. And we did prepare the drainage calculations and the plans that you have in front of you. And if you'd like, I could just perhaps quickly go through Mr. Graham's comments and how we responded to them. I know that you've already had one hearing and so you know the project generally. There really haven't been many changes to the project, but I will talk about it as we go along.
Can we do these one by one? Because I think we can, as we go through, we can cross them off.
Okay.
Take care.
Whatever you want.
So Mr. Graham's first comment dealt with the removal of existing trees. And our comment is that there is no removal of trees necessary for the project as laid out. So, and I think previously we had a pipe that extended out towards the tree line. We've moved that pipe so it's away from the tree line. And we might have to remove a branch or two, but nothing serious. And our response would be that we could include that as a condition of approval. In regards to exterior lighting, as was presented to the board, translucent panels were going to exist on the side of the building. And, but.
I'm sorry, what was that? What's on the side?
As originally proposed, you may recall that the building had translucent panels on the side. And I think Mr. Graham's comment was pointing out that if you looked at this building at nighttime and people were in it at nighttime, you might be able to see light through some of the translucent panels. You wouldn't see direct light shining out from inside the building because, again, there'd be translucent panels. It's not clear glass. But we're considering getting rid of the translucent panels now because they might cast shadows inside the riding arena, which might be disturbing to the riders and the horses, as I understand it. So we're probably going to see less translucent panels on the building anyways. And secondly, in regards to wall packs or exterior lights, we will put a light at each entrance door on the building, but that light will be, will be the cutoff style. So we're not casting light into the direction of the neighbors. And it really would be just limited to those three lights. I think we've got three doors in the building and so we just would have three lights.
In compliance with the lighting bylaw.
That's correct.
My response to that, again, it could be a condition of your approval. And I think the only windows that are suggested that might be eliminated are the ones to the north. The rest of it is entirely up to, you know, the applicant, but just the ones.
I don't think it might have been.
On the north, yes.
Can you point those out, Bob?
There's no windows on the north.
Well, there might have been on one of the original, that shows windows on the north.
Right. Again, what it shows are the translucent panels, not so much the windows, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
The third comment referred to limiting the potential need for blasting during the project. And this was a suggestion that if a ledge is encountered, it might be appropriate to pin the foundation wall to the ledge. And I would agree, that's an appropriate way to deal with ledge if it's encountered. We have some, we have done some test pits around the building so far. And we've gone down about five feet at five locations. So we haven't seen ledge yet, but there's a chance we might hit it. And that would be an appropriate way to manage that. No further comment necessarily. I don't think. The fourth comment dealt with the infiltration trench and the possibility that if we put a foundation drain underneath the, or at the toe of the footing, that we might negate the purpose of the infiltration trench. So next to our building, we've got a five-foot wide trench. It's thirty inches deep. Water will come off the roof and fall into this stone-lined area. And there percolate slowly down into the ground. If a foundation drain was put next to the footing, then it might just carry that water quickly away. And we don't need a foundation drain in this project because there's no basement space that we're trying to keep dry or anything like that.
My, I appreciate that. My only comment is that, having done one of these many years ago now, over an Ipswich, the specification on the floor of the riding arena itself had, the top layer was a specification by people that built the arena. But it was twenty-four inches thick of material, a specified, specific material. And then beneath that was two more layers of stone. It, what it added up to was having a drain at the bottom of all that, about six feet below the floor of the arena. If that is something that you'll find out later that you're going to need to do or want to do for, for the type of floor that you want to have within the arena, that drain would be slightly lower, Bob, than your outfall to the southwest corner by about a half a foot. So it means you're six feet below the floor, which was, which was going to be, I think, at ninety-four, puts you down at eighty-eight. Your outfall's at eighty-eight or five. So you want to, if you're going to construct this thing with different layers and, and a floor that, that's special floor.
Not going to be.
You're just going to have a dirt sand floor.
The only trenching's going to be for the, there's already such a great surface there now. The only trenching will be for the footings and crosswalk unless they stay. But so that's why there's no need for a foundation drain or anything.
And no need for a drain within the arena itself.
We're trying to keep moisture in there to do away with dust. So that would defeat.
Okay. All right. Then I think we can move on from there. That basically says that there won't be a foundation.
Correct. Simple as that. On the plan, okay.
You can make that a condition.
Fair enough. You can make it one such that if they're, if they decide to do it later, we take another look at it.
Yeah.
Okay. Comment number five was a suggestion that we consider harvesting the rainwater. We do have a pretty good-sized roof area here. And there will be a fair amount of clean runoff that comes off of the roof. And we've spoken to the applicant and they're willing to look into it. We don't really have anything designed right now or anything specific to propose, but it's something we'll give some serious thought to. And I guess I would just direct that to the board, how would the board like to handle that other than that response?
I personally am surprised that at some point we need to look at that and incorporate it into, make it mandatory, especially in light of the difficulty this town has had in keeping up with the growth for, you know, tap water. And with substantially, this could go into, I know it's an added expense. We're talking, you know, a concrete cistern with a pump that would be actually used for, you know, for landscaping. This water would certainly, if that was a, how many gallons, you know, you're an engineer, quite a few gallons would come off this roof in any substantial rainstorm. And would keep a fifteen-hundred gallon cistern full most of the time. And as that gets replenished, that would easily save, you know, that would, that would take care of the landscaping around, lawns or whatever that was there. There is, is it going to be some green lawns or?
We're not adding any lawns.
But anywhere within the whole area? What's the need for water there?
Only needed in the rain, just dust control.
Just dust control, yeah. Well, you know, it's either that or using, you have a well on site?
Yes.
You do have a well? Yeah. I mean, if it's, was town water, I would definitely be really adamant about it, you know?
I did a quick little calculation. We get about, on the average, about three and a half inches per month of rain. Over your roof, that equates to about thirty, a little under thirty-five thousand gallons in the average month of yield. Now, I mean, some months you have no rain and next month you might have five inches.
It's true. Sometimes we'll keep it.
But, you know, on the average, that's thirty-five thousand gallons of water that might be available to you to use. If you use about five cents per cubic foot, that's two hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month. So you're going to recover putting a couple of fifteen-hundred gallon tanks or something under that entry weight and some pumps to, you know, water the arena pretty quickly. So I think it's something that we all need to consider, you know, in all of our, you know, projects.
I think without a doubt, especially, this is a perfect situation for.
Actually, a roof that large, you can solar cells on it too.
I know on flat roofs in the towns that I work in, they make us capture an internal drainage. And they don't allow us to use town water for landscaping. It's just absolutely not allowed.
Not sure where they connect.
Well, I mean, they, they don't. You have to truck it in. They only allow it for the establishment period, you know, the first two years after that.
With the price of water going up and rallying.
It will be going up. Now, what's the usage? Is it quite a bit of usage? Was this, this many horses as far as much they drank or how much you need to keep the dust down?
No.
Not really?
I mean, I don't think we even. I mean, I don't think we even, I think we need water all summer in terms of the-
So it's not like there's a big strain on your existing water supply as it is?
No. I mean, it's really just to water the horses, honestly.
It doesn't dry out with the roof over it, like an outdoor rain?
Well, Mr. Graham, you want to, I mean, I asked the board if you want to-
Well, I think it's, I think, I agree that they're excellent, it's an excellent idea, but, you know, I don't know, without having a rule on it, I don't know if we can require them to do it. And I think it's something that they, again, we're, we're willing to give very serious consideration to it. I just, you know, can't come to you tonight with this particular design and this is a project that isn't going to be a significant water user.
Right.
Well, that's what, I think it would be more significant for a project like Forest Ridge. I mean, I think they have a cistern, right? Where they have a lot of landscaping and they're, they're using a lot of water. I mean, you mentioned that the town requiring that, that, you know, retained water be used for all landscaping. You really don't have landscaping here, right? I mean, it's just a house and, you know, so, I mean, I, you know, I can't-
Dust suppression and horses drinking. That's about it?
Well, we can, can encourage you to consider that. I don't see how we can require them.
All right. So as our engineer, so I guess we can mention it to the applicant, I mean, or just leave it out?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a very valid comment.
Oh, it's a valid comment. There's nothing saying you can't put it in a comment, but I don't think we require them necessarily to, and to do that.
Okay. Next.
Okay, so the-
Do you know it?
The next comment was a recommendation to put a little berm just outside of the infiltration trench that would cap, that would sort of force water to stay in the infiltration trench if it ever got up to the ground surface. And so that's what we proposed there. I think Larry, you might have recommended 12 inches. We said, well, we'd just like to keep it down to six inches right now, just to simplify the maintenance a little bit and a little cramp a few spots. But I think it's a good suggestion and I think that six inch berm will accomplish what you had recommended.
What's the material?
It would just be dirt.
Dirt and lawn.
The only comment on that, Bob, is that when I looked at the plans, I think it doesn't specify, you only need it on infiltration trench number one because it's uphill.
Yeah.
The one that's up, the one that's uphill, you don't need it because it's going to stay in the trench. So you might just, you know, clarify the plans on that.
Okay.
So it's trench number one?
It's trench number one in the plan. Okay. The next comment ran to do with the location of the overflow pipes. And you may recall, we had just coming perpendicularly off the building, one here and one here. And so the recommendation is to put it down here in this sort of cleared area where a manure pile had been removed a couple of years ago. And so that's where it's located. Put a little riprap at the end of the pipe. The infiltration trench is sized for a 100-year storm. We get those every few years now, but I don't think we're going to see much flow out of this six-inch overflow pipe. The soils were excellent here. We put a factor of safety in calculations. This trench system should handle more than a 100-year storm without any difficulties.
And, and the Conservation Commission concurs with that?
I don't think they concurd with my point specifically, but I think that they concurd that the plan was approvable.
Right. They like that the infiltration was good before it got to the wetland and this embedded-
The overflow is now further away, has more overland travel and all that, so it's-
Before it goes to wetlands?
It's an improvement. Comment eight, I think, was a comment that the stormwater calculations looked okay, so no response required in that.
I think we said they were very detailed and thorough.
Thank you. The comment nine referred to the O and M requirements. And so we are requiring that the infiltration trench be checked a couple of times during the first year and then thereafter. And so we've attached a copy of, oh, I was, I'm getting nine and 10 mixed up here, I'm sorry. Comment number 10, the copy of the signed O and M form by Ms. Millman. Comment number nine was to say that if you wish to have the inspection forms submitted to your office during the project, we'd be happy to do that.
I would.
Okay. I think nine and 10 can both be conditions of project-
So we have that on file and typical O and M, is that on a yearly basis? Is that, are those typically-
They have it laid out. They have it in their, in their-
When I see it, I'll see it, yeah. When you're done with them, yeah. And you're able to use this plan? You don't have to submit a new stormwater management plan, you're able to, in this case, use this plan, right?
Right.
Okay.
It's all tied together.
For the submission, right. Kind of a fast track type of thing within their regs, yeah.
Comment number 11 dealt with a number of horses and we're really not doing anything to add horses to the facility here. We really just are trying to make the, the riding conditions a little bit less sensitive to the weather. So anyways, we don't think that we necessarily need to get into the number of horses here. There's some other town regs, I think, that deal with the number of horses on the site and I think they're satisfactory. And lastly, number, comment number 12 had to do with the uses of your arena. I think somebody had asked a question whether or not it was being used commercially or privately. And this is a private, private facility for private use.
So that would be the first condition of your approval.
Sure.
Hard to enforce, yeah.
Just for the sake of, I mean, I, I know, but it allows you to have some exhibition. Is there a gray area? I mean, if you're training, is it polo horses?
Um, riding, yes.
Well, do they come like to have fun and have training and tea? I mean, what, what do they pay you to, I mean?
No.
This is a great facility for doing it. I mean, you know, if you have that size, it's a huge facility.
Right. It was designed-
It's a polo field.
Polo facility. The previous owner, the husband, had 20 horses in a polo barn and the wife had eight horses in a equestrian barn. At the other end of the property, there's a polo exercise area on the property. And my purpose for purchasing this particular property was the use of those facilities plus the ability to put an indoor so I could ride 12 months a year, not just the five. The previous owner would go south for the winter and didn't need it. So to have this lovely property that's designed for polo and not be able to play seven months a year is sort of detrimental, I would say. So my goal is to play. I have my own horses there. The other owner rides, doesn't play polo, but has horses there. Do I have friends who come and want to play with me with their horses? Yes.
And play polo?
Play polo. This, this reason this area is so big for the indoor is so we can play polo on it. I mean, it's, it's smaller than a regular indoor polo arena, but it's big enough that you can play versus-
What's the size of a typical indoor polo arena?
300 by 100.
Wow. Makes sense when you look at the field.
Yeah, so.
Even that, how big is the one outside?
The one, the outdoor area is 100 yards by 8 yards. But that's not even, I mean, a real polo field is 300 yards. So I couldn't even have a game outside. You know, I could play around out there.
So you don't rent out the 28 stalls?
No.
Again, that's the building.
What I have used them for, last winter, several barns had their roofs caved in because of excess snow. We said, you have an emergency, you can bring your horses over here. We had some rescue horses that couldn't fit at the rescue shelter. We took them in for three months and sent them out. That's, that's what we, well, I want to be able to do that. I want to use 28 stalls if I have an opportunity, but it's not-
That was nice of you to do that with all the four horses.
And that's not why I'm saying it, but it's just, we can do that and, you know, horse people like to help horse people, so if I can do that, I want to do that.
If you wish to, you know, do an in-home commercial venture, you would have to go back to the building inspector, right?
Well, the person pushing it, so you'd have to do all sorts of things, so.
All right, that's helpful. Thanks.
Okay. So I think, you know, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I think our changes to the plan are minor. I apologize for the last-minute nature of the presentation of the letter, but I hope that you'll find the revision satisfactory and, and responsive to your comments.
Is this, we have a revised plan that's been approved by the Conservation Commission.
Great. You all have reduced copies of the plan there. Some full-size copies here.
Is this, so these are the ones for ConCon?
Same plan, yes.
Same plan?
Yeah.
Do you see them having to do anything else?
No, I'd recommend the board consider this evening approving this, closing a public hearing after any comments from the audience, if there are any, and approving this subject to the certificate of vote. Or closing it and then, and then having the certificate of vote at the next meeting.
Right.
Of course. Which will coincide anyways with what they're doing with Conservation Commission. So what would be signing would be a miler of this.
Well, that would come later, actually.
Yeah, after, yeah. So they don't have to do any more engineering and your, any, have you looked at this for notes or any, is there any, does this plan need to be revised?
The plan that I reviewed this afternoon does not need to be revised other than if they choose or the board chooses on the rainwater harvesting to get together and have that on the final plan. That would be, be lovely, but I'm not sure where we're going with that one. So if you leave that up to the applicant, we'll see what happens with that. But other than that, I'm okay with the plan.
Your recommendation, that would be some kind of cistern in the ground?
Well, I, it's, it's very easy to put a couple of precast concrete tanks under the, I think you call it an entryway or the, you know, where you, where you come in, that front door and, and have your pumps, your lockables right there and be able to use it in the arena or outside for landscaping, whatever you wanted to do, but it's not a, it's not a huge cost factor. Down the road, it's, once you build this, then it might be a huge cost factor to try to put a cistern, you know, in there and it gets plumbing and stuff.
Well, but if they're using well water, your own private well now, then there's really no economy to it, is there? I mean, because you're pulling the groundwater-
There's always a kind of saving, why?
You're, you're pulling the mill river out. Oh, no, but, no, I mean, there's no, there's no savings to the homeowner because they've got their own private well.
Savings, that is not paying for town water, is what you mean.
Well, but they're not paying for town water now.
That's what I mean.
I've got a question. Do you want to run off recharge the groundwater if you didn't put it in a cistern?
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I think, again, I think it's a great idea, but I think it's, I don't know if this, this is the project for us to-
This may not be the optimal application for it.
Right.
In some commercial applications where you're wasting all this water that goes, you know, just onto the road and into a-
Right. For, for a shopping center, I think that's a great idea.
Out into the ocean. And depletes the rivers. If you look at the Mill River-
The Mill River Park.
Yeah. Mill River, because the town draws water from it, dries up. It never did till we started drawing water. Up in the upper reaches, it dries up. And it's not, doesn't dry up because of the amount of rain we're having. It basically trickles because we're sucking all the water out, not replenishing, you know?
Sure.
So, so, so you're, you're right. This is not, you know-
This is the kind of thing that the-
In an urban setting, it's more important, you know?
This is the kind of thing that a board should address in its rules and regs. I mean, you know, we don't address this, I don't know, I just don't think this is the time to impose this requirement.
No, if you had an acre of lawn or outside fields that you watered on a regular basis, it would make sense. That's a very important one, would recharge. Any other comments from people who came?
I'm Kathy Herr from Herr Farm. I just came in support of this project for Dr. Mill. We are in approval.
That's great.
To support her.
I also support her on lots of the property and I think it's a great idea.
Good. Anyone else? Nobody's here in opposition?
Sorry, what was your name?
John Gorman.
Yeah. Yeah, John's down here, right? Anyone else who's not down? Everybody?
I didn't sign it.
No, you're in support, it's okay. Anyway, I want to get everyone else.
Kathy Herr?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, Kathy, yeah.
My husband's hand.
Into the habit.
He gave you permission.
Any other comments from board members?
The fee is paid.
Yeah, the consulting fees we paid, the application fee, we had a $1,000 check, which is the minimum application fee. The board entertained, reducing that, you did.
Right. We never voted on that.
No, we didn't. That's why I'm bringing it up, yeah.
So consultant fees are all paid up.
Yep, paid up last time. Am I right, Larry?
Yes, it was paid.
Did you stay within that or you have to do additional?
I don't know, I hope so. I'll, I'll try.
It says additional billing-
I've got one more thing to do, I think, for the board. It was probably to write the certificate of vote.
So additional billings may occur and you're responsible for any additional billings. In addition, you have received a invoice, I believe, from our office for the advertising.
Correct.
As you know, that, that needs to be paid prior to any billing permitting issue.
Well, prior to our permitting.
I know, but also that billing, it comes to me as well as billing.
Yeah, I, I recol chase mine.
Okay. Like Mary Ann normally would be here and say, okay, so, but she's not here.
The last-minute review today was on premium time, though.
What do you describe as premium time?
We get the discount time.
We need the board, man, we're typically trying to get this like Monday before the meetings.
Fair enough.
So I knew what was going on and was pushing out just to-
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next time.
You're welcome. So you want to, you want to pay the advertising? Go for it. You have to deal with Mr. Graham. Other than that, it's all paid up. The question we were, we were going to do was whether or not you wanted to reduce the, I don't know whether Mary Ann, she was holding it, I think, holding it.
I think, I think she said she wasn't. I think she said she deposited.
She deposited.
Yeah. That's a problem.
Well, what's the purpose of the fee?
It's our minimum, that's, that's our application fee for side planning.
And why do we collect it then?
Well, I think we need to, we need to take a look at our fee structure and-
For residential project.
For this kind of type of project, which is an accessory, accessory to a residence, accessory residential building, I mean, a $1,000 does seem a little high. I would, I would say that we should have a separate, lower fee for these kinds of projects.
That's something to entertain in the rules and regs.
Right.
I don't know if we can, can we, can we refund?
I, I don't know if we can, if, if-
I think you have to take a town vote to do that.
Yeah, so.
If it goes in or has already gone into the general fund, you can.
Right.
Well, that's an act of Congress.
You do have the authority to modify that fee.
We do.
It's just that it happens that it happened too fast. It went in the general fund.
Well, that's the problem, I think. Yeah, we can, we can waive it, waive it entirely if we wanted to or certainly reduce it, but the problem is where, how do we refund it as a practical matter?
Well, you have a situation now where the advertising, we can, you know, she's paying 300 something for the advertising. We could-
Why don't we hold on it and-
We could vote to pay for that.
Yeah, that's true. Right.
And that would be about the similar type of thing we were wanting to do.
Yeah, because we have, we have a line item in our budget for advertising.
We do, yeah, we do, yeah. We have in the past, covered. For sure, we have done that. I'll take a vote on that.
I'll make a motion to pay the advertising fees out of our own budget.
Oh, second.
Just for the record, it's like three hundred and ten dollars. Is that right?
Three hundred and ten fifty.
Okay. Just so people know what we're talking about. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstained? Is that your amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
What was that amount, three hundred and ten?
Three hundred and ten fifty.
Three hundred and ten fifty.
No, it's just something that I think, it has to happen right upfront in the process, not at this point, so.
Right.
That kind of question and that kind of decision. We're very aware of the times that we're in, and so, again, it can go under environment, good lighting, save energy.
So it sounds like that's it for the questions tonight, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks to finalize the certificate, unless there's something else?
At our next meeting, which is a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Fifteen, sixteen.
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 Do we need to close? Do we need to close?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Will that be seven thirty or?
No. It is seven thirty, we'll make what you on first, all right?
Great.
So it's three weeks?
Yeah, so, it's not really going to, yeah, that's the first time we can, that's, yeah, sixteen.
So Larry, you gonna draft the decision?
Sure. Get it to the board a week ahead of time and.
Yeah, we'll try to get the decision drafted and then have it put in the meeting and file with the clerk thereafter as fast as possible. Thanks a lot. I'm glad, I'm glad it worked out.
We want to do it right. Miss Mill, what do you have used for an address? Do a board doctor?
Yes.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Larry.
Anything else you want to tell us?
No.
Marion Way, Marion Way has been worked out.
Yeah, I can give you a couple of things on that.
Before we get into that, you know, this idea of a cistern, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but it should be in our regs.
I wrote it, I wrote it down.
The board want to, and I think a lot of towns are starting to have, you know, low impact development regs, I mean, I think we should think about doing that.
I've got a template, all right, for you?
Yeah, sure, I mean, they're up there.
It basically should be required in your, any of the recharge areas, in your well recharge areas and so forth.
Yeah, sure, yeah, you're right, it should be. Where is that, the recharge area, I mean, is that?
Any, in your, in your.
Zone.
Zone two, zone one, zone two.
Yeah, this is not in the zone two, it's just below it.
So you want to require solar, passive solar type things?
Well, that's, I don't know if we require that, I don't think towns have area, you know.
They do require white roofs, for example, in commercial buildings, they do require cisterns and landscaping.
Yeah, a white roof would actually be nice for these.
They do require low flow toilets, like water toilets required in some towns.
They work.
LED.
Yeah, low flow toilets.
I know, but there is requirements for low flush and those should be incorporated. Lighting is definitely being required now, you know, LED load.
Oh, LED lights.
Yeah. As well as the state has guidelines in the new, the building, international building code, which is being transitioned over into for all building now, is using insulation factors and energy saving factors that are very stringent now. In terms of ratio of windows, like if you want to put a lot of windows in, they have to be certain, David knows this, they have to be certain types of windows versus walls that are insulated. You have to heavily insulate, if you want a big window building, you have to save energy some other way to get that.
Really? I don't know, because you see some buildings that are totally glass and they somehow are lead platinum.
I know. I think it's very expensive. An interesting question for Ipswich Bay Glass, who does a lot of these big buildings in Boston now.
Well, the insulation.
How do you, what kind of glass do you use now to achieve these energy saving?
Insulation glass is used by combination, the two glass and the, you know, area in between it. You know, generally it's going to be a positive slating as plywood, so, you know.
It's an interest, that's part of it, yeah. But I think they gain credits for reusing energy in the building, you know, heat pumps with their HVAC systems, they have to gain it otherwise.
Well, I think that's a little advanced for a town.
No, but I'm just saying, no, but in a simple.
Hey, I have a heat pump.
In a simple fashion.
Those are requiring it.
We have had some commercial projects in front of them, in a simple fashion, especially in zone two, is Larry, it's really important now with the town. The town's had to spread from three wells to five or six now, so.
But zone two is not that big of an area, so, I mean, and this is outside zone two, right?
Yeah, I don't know if Raleigh has it, I haven't looked at their maps, but I don't know if they have any, you know, groundwater or surface water areas other than the circular areas around the wells.
Well, no, we have a big water.
We have a zone two now, we had to get it approved.
I had forgotten, I haven't looked at it for a while. A lot of it's accounted on Route One, right?
Yeah. Right.
Spreads up, spreads up towards Geno's and then around, it goes across the road or box the road and kind of comes around towards my house on eighty box.
But you're saying we should require this all over the town, right, or aren't you?
Sure, yeah, I think you should. Encourage it.
Right.
Problem is all the big roofs have been built, but we should require for future ones anyway.
Well, yeah.
Well, something, a multiplicity of roofs equals a big one.
I don't disagree with that, I'm just saying.
The problem with that kind of thing, though, is, is the collection system to get it to one.
One cistern?
One or two cisterns. Go out with the distribution system of landscaping. I'm involved with Turner Hill right now, we're building on seven and a half acres. I've got three and a half acres that are going to contribute to a hundred and sixty thousand gallon tank that we're putting underground that's being, that's been put right now, we've still got the top to do, but that, that will irrigate the seven and a half acres, given the average rainfall per month over the three and a half we're going to collect it from. It'll irrigate that whole thing. So, I mean, those are things that I think we all need to look at.
Well, would you propose something like that for this, for the carriage, country club, whatever it is?
You could, because they're fairly, it's in a fairly condensed area, as you pointed out tonight, you know, that's probably over maybe five acres, six acres.
Hopefully it won't be that condensed.
And ironically, this is actually upstream from our recharge in Bachelor Brook, this actually does eventually go to one of our water areas.
Yeah.
It's a lot off from here. In addition, this will have substantial water usage requirement.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of landscaping in there.
Yeah, sure, well, country club.
Well, you could always require rain barrel, you know, for a small house, people collect water off the roof in a rain barrel.
The problem is that is they're individual, you don't have control, they don't have to hook it up to, winter time is an issue with those things.
How's it enough gutters, so.
And you have to, it works, these kind of things actually work better when you work with your water department, because they're the ones that can monitor whether people are actually using them or not.
Oh, yeah.
They can see it right away, because when you have, especially if you have irrigation, and they start using it, you know, underground irrigation, spikes on the dry, and they know the usage, where they should be using their cistern.
I think, I think these people are going to use a lot more water inside than they think they would for that.
Without a doubt. In the winter, too.
Yeah, all the time. Because that moisture doesn't stay in there that well.
All right, any other comments, because you want to go home?
No, but you wanted to talk about Marion Way.
Just give us the status.
Well, I'm not done, but Jerry did go through all the drainage stuff that Deculus submitted, and it does not address stormwater management standards very well. TSS removal, infiltration, pre and post, almost right down to the list of all the standards, it's not good. And, and pretty much that's what Camatch Review said the same thing, so.
But, I mean, is this true, I mean, the board can correct me, the stormwater management erosion control bylaw applies, correct?
Yes, through the Conservation.
Right. Because that's a, it's administered by the Conservation.
Florida Housing Concom.
Well, but it's a forty B project, so.
No Conservation.
Forty B only gets you out of zoning and subdivision rules or regs.
It gets you out of local rules.
Yep, it's stormwater management.
It's not local.
Not local.
But the local bylaw is a local rule. So the extent that there's.
By filing a stormwater management plan is not local. You're right, our erosion.
Right, well.
You're thinking of the Conservation, because rules are local, yes.
Right.
They'd be exempt.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, they got to comply with state stormwater policy, but.
Which is federal.
And which, really, yeah.
To the extent our bylaw opposes a more stringent requirement, they have an argument for saying they don't comply with.
In terms of administration and.
But not the state stormwater management policy and practices.
And the O and M.
For the state, yeah.
How did, well, I mean, I don't know if you want to get into, you know, want to extend the discussion, the issue I'm concerned about was the, mostly concerned about is the site distance issue.
I haven't looked at that yet.
Yeah, I mean, Camatch did get into that.
Yeah.
They did.
Spotted some problems.
Right.
Yeah, without, yeah.
But I think he was talking about site distances for cars heading south on Daniels, that's where he saw a potential problem, but he mentioned it's a twenty mile per hour, twenty-five mile per hour speed limit there, and in reality, isn't it more than that?
I don't, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't gotten into it yet.
You would, I mean, you would determine that by a traffic study, a speed study, right?
Well, to get your eightieth percentile or your fifth percentile, kind of thing.
I guess what I'm saying is, you know, shouldn't a speed study be required to actually verify what the speeds are?
Because there's no metrics in there, right?
Probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Actually, didn't we do one for, on that S curve?
Window?
We did.
We had somebody do it.
We did.
Well, we didn't do it.
No, but it was not.
Was his name McCarthy or something? What was his name?
I can't remember.
I don't know if he did a speed study, I can't remember that.
It was definitely a count.
There was some sort of review.
Traffic study, yeah, how long your road is at the S curve, so.
What?
Counts per time.
Yeah, but I don't know if they studied the speeds.
I'm not so sure, I think that was.
Well, the site distance because of some sort of tree that we discussed when they ripped it down.
Well, I was going to say, because on the other side, there's a site distance issue of people coming north on Daniels, as I recall, that they couldn't see around that bend, so if someone's coming south and north at the same time.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So I was wondering if that needs to be, I don't think, Camatch didn't look at that aspect of it.
That's a tight bend.
They'll look at that whole thing, because I.
And that was, on that side, as I recall, that there was effectively no right of way or room, room to do any grading that would improve the situation.
You got that big bank.
Yes.
I mean, I think it would be helpful to document that as a problem.
Now, are you going to PDF that to Katrina O'Leary? Or do you want us to look at it first?
I think it should go to you.
But you fully think I would like to get it to the ZBA earlier than later?
Yeah.
Is that okay with the board?
To send it simultaneously? Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Katrina's expecting, the ZBA administrator asked us for input.
So send it to you, copy to them?
Yeah.
And so, as they, they don't meet all that often, but when they do meet, they're going to move this. I believe in the last meeting, Mr. Deculus did not show up.
No, he didn't. I was there.
Okay, thank, thank you. He didn't show up, right?
No.
It was on the agenda?
Yes.
And so we have been sending ZBA agendas to people. Likewise, the planning board agenda has been going to building inspector on, to everyone. Great to try to improve communication between boards. I'm happy that the building inspector has been calling me and being, keeping me in the loop as to what he's doing with various projects, it's very much appreciated. And likewise, the ZBA administrator is doing the same thing. And Brent wrote a note even at the last minute for us today, so I'm pleased to, I'll have to go and see where it goes and how it helps things, but I think in our rules and regs, another thing to be looked at besides the Form A, you know?
Right. And fees.
Great comments, I'll get a template on that, and then also the energy rate.
So I think that's a bridge too far for us.
Let's knock them down one at a time. But I'm glad Larry brought it up.
Right.
Anything else from Camatch?
No.
The cell tower, still in their court, those decisions.
I'm right here.
Oh, man, I thought you looked at it. I'm like, go for it, you gotta go, okay, sorry.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Painter, I'm representing AT&amp;T. We came here about.
I'm sorry, what was your, what was your last name again?
Painter.
Did you sign here, too?
P-A-Y-N-G-R, I say.
You want to come up?
We were here about a month and a half ago, and I think the only decision that was really made was, we were going to write the decisions, and the man I was with, Frank, he wrote them, but I guess we wanted it in a letter format, so I have those rewritten, I sent them to Mary Ann today, but I don't know if that was before she was called out. So I have them with me, and then I also have the check for the.
Advertising.
Advertising fee.
That's cool. So, one of the sixteenth.
Sixteenth of November.
We have to, have to look in our agenda, you guys want to get, what's your timeline, you guys want to get going in this?
You have ninety days to vote from when we close the public hearing.
The date's actually on our agenda.
So it's probably Friday.
What do I do? I've got Barry here. Anyway, it's December, it's mid-December. I guess they haven't been looked at, they just came.
There were two towers, so there's, sorry, I didn't know if you guys had any, so I didn't make copies, I'm sorry.
I don't see any future meetings listed yet. Is it near the bottom, or was it?
You want to, I'll give it to Larry, we're not going to be able to vote on, close it.
Okay. Well, we have to wait until December, or could next month it possibly be?
No, next month.
Okay.
You'll be on early.
Well, the decisions have to be by twelve thirteen, low, according to the agenda.
We will, yeah, we'll have it.
At the latest.
Next meeting. I don't see any reason why it can't be done next meeting, right?
No, no reason.
Sixteen.
Okay, so come to that, should I bring anything?
No, we'll be in touch.
Or we'll be good to go?
We'll be in touch, we'll push, I'll give these to Larry, and we'll put it together, what we have with the other ones.
Well, they wrote the decision, you haven't.
They wrote, we'll do it.
I only made the comment that I thought that the one should be an amendment. I don't know about the one, I've never been involved with on Prospect Hill.
Right, and then I'm paying Larry, I remember Larry's doing this on our goal, because he wasn't, you know.
Yeah. Okay.
Contracted with you to review any of this stuff.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we don't even know whether they have a special permit, I mean.
She was doing.
It may have been.
You mean for the Prospect Hill?
Right.
Yeah, I don't know.
It may have been approved, I think it was, it was approved before we had a cell tower bylaw, so I don't know.
I know that Mary Ann started looking for.
Perhaps the ZBA.
She found some stuff, she continued to research, we'll pull it together, I'll make, we'll come up with a memo for the board prior to the meeting, so people have background and enough information.
Okay.
And we're going to try with enough information from both background and through research and through looking at the ZBA stuff.
Okay.
To put it together.
Does this take, on the savory site, do we pull it together as an amendment, as the second amendment? Because I thought that's...
No, I think they're both mentioned as the first amendment, but they're both mentioned as the first amendment, but they could be wrong. We don't have the previous...
But there's already been one amendment to the savory site.
This would be the second one.
Dave, were you at the meeting for the AT&amp;T stuff?
No.
Okay. So you can't vote?
If you schedule your meetings, right, I'll be here. God willing, I'm over.
You have to, you have to, you know.
Well, you can, you can, yeah, if you listen to a tape recording, you vote, because it was only one meeting.
Okay, good.
That helps.
But you don't have a tape.
I'm sorry?
You missed it on TV.
The chairman, that's Curtis.
Yeah, they have...
Oh, we just copied it from an example one that Mary Ann sent us.
Do you have it on demand, or?
Depending what date, I probably have it, but I can't guarantee I'll check.
Oh, okay.
And we can make a CD of it?
If I have it, I could make a CD.
Well, that's...
Have you paid up all the advertising?
Advertising, my last check is here at the, because this was for this week, I believe?
Right.
And we already paid the previous week.
Mary Ann told me that.
Yeah, okay.
This is chairman, this, we're talking about site plan review only, because they weren't racing the height of the tower, so it's not a special permit, so three votes will be plenty, so that's fine.
Thank you. I think we mentioned that at the beginning, too.
We did, yeah.
All right, so...
Next month?
I don't think we're going to need, so eight o'clock.
Okay.
On the 16th.
Okay.
And we will be in touch, because I would like to put this to bed.
Me, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry about the wait.
No, not a problem. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
I thought you were from the press.
Yeah, me, too. I should have been taking pictures.
Thank you. What else we got? Minutes. Oh, yeah. You read them?
I read them.
And already, we have two from July, and we have August 31st. I have been encouraging Mary Ann to get cut up.
Is she?
I know she, the other two are in draft form, but My Hooka By Crook will be cut up in November.
And what are the dates from July?
6th and the 20th.
6th and 20th.
And what is the other one?
The 31st of August.
The 31st of August is missing some stuff. I put a comment written on the subpar. A discussion of the fees the applicant made wasn't in the comments. I know we had a discussion about that, so I should be reflecting the meeting minutes.
Can you specify?
I don't remember how much. I wrote it on the side thing, so. I don't remember what you said about it, but we had some back and forth with Mary Ann. We relooked our notes to make them more complete. I don't have a paper.
You want my copy?
This is your copy?
I just wanted Stuart's.
Oh, Stuart, yeah.
All right, I just want to go through one by one and see if we can approve any of them that we did.
I'll take leave.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Larry, very valuable. Thanks a lot.
I apologize for being late tonight. I called and left a message, but I guess Mary Ann...
You can call myself.
I didn't, yeah. So I called the office. If you heard the phone...
I've called you enough.
I'll be 15 minutes late.
It's on your...
Don't worry about it.
Yeah, don't worry about it. I held up anyways. July 6th?
I'll make a motion to approve it?
Second. I just want to make sure, was that worked out in terms of you two?
What?
Was there a differentiation as to what you guys were saying, whether Larry was going to review? What was it? You were going to review something that she said, that you said it could be reviewed? Oh, Ashley wrote.
What about it?
That she said that you said that Larry could review it.
Right.
And that wasn't in the minutes as such, so.
Oh, no, I looked at them again.
That's fine, good. Just for people to know that there's, the lawyer's still looking for covenant to, even though the transaction has already taken place and yet another house is sold, so both houses in that subdivision have been sold. No, the one has been sold. No, it applies to the other one was built, but I don't know what that, but anyways, that was sold. The lawyer of the buyer obviously would like to clear the title and, you know, close out the file. I called them, asked them to, you know, send us the wording, and I said they would have to contract through Mary Ann, saying, let them know, they have to contract Larry Graham at a sufficient amount of time for me to go there and make sure, you know. I would feel, I mean, that's why I'm bringing it up, because people feel differently. I wouldn't want to entertain voting on something that says that it's built according to all the old plans if I didn't know for sure.
Yeah, that's what we said at that meeting, that you were not...
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So that's fine?
Yeah.
So that, I'm waiting for them, and I know they know it, because I told them, I know the buyer, I mean, Mrs. Breen knows, but she's really not involved, it's really the lawyer of the buyer, so.
I wonder, I guess Larry's not, Larry said he would spend, what, no more than two hours on it or something?
Correct. And Larry's in the loop now, and that too, he's waiting. But I called her and said, okay, I'll give you Larry's number and...
I wonder if we should make the person who's selling the house, or the buyer, pay for Larry's fee?
It would have to.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah. Sure, they would have to pay for that.
Yeah.
That's what I said, I was going to tell the lawyer if she called me back. All right, there's a motion here to accept the July 6 meeting, all of them.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's seconded by David.
Who was the first part?
Me.
Cliff. Yeah, I got a trickle.
Yeah.
Sorry. July 20th, there was, again, that was a fairly short meeting. Again, I was running around with desks and travel.
Who was that then?
But thank God, took this meeting, but it wasn't...
Was I at that meeting?
This was Glenn Wayne.
Oh, yeah, I was there.
Cliff was there, Gene, Stuart, David, just, I was absent. Glenn Wayne, Ashley wrote, came up then, too, and that was it. And gone, short. Make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's done. Came back with a... Stuart mentioned the applicant, but I don't know.
I don't remember what tax, but I believe it was four, it's like 3,500, so we definitely talked about that, and we had schedules back and forth, I didn't find it reflected in the meeting minutes, so we should put that in there.
There was a discussion on, the town has a sign off, they can't, in case there's a tax delinquent list, that normally applies when somebody goes for any permit, but this wasn't what he was going for, he was going for a release to get some cash flow to pay.
Are you talking about Ken Hamilton?
Yeah, Ken Hamilton. Subsequently, when I talked to the collector's office, what was being disseminated was the revenues that hadn't been paid.
Oh.
Yeah, that's what, I got a call.
That's good enough. We still discussed it some...
But I think it's important to discuss, and for all I know, the timing may have been, I'm saying it wasn't, may have not very well not been a revenue, it may have been totally right, it may have been paid right after that, so.
Right.
And I'm not going to even parse that, I, you know.
Why don't we ask Mary Ann to look at her notes and...
Yeah, sort of redo it, put that conversation in there.
Let's have her redo that paragraph and put that in there. That's fine. I didn't read the comments on the, that was kind of a, a little bit of a contentious discussion, but it is what it is. And then, we had meeting house bill, it's tripartite extension, the town, Mo and Said. The major discussion was, so do people want to...
Did the $50 fee, I didn't actually check that discussion, make it in there? That's the $50 fee, the snow plowing stuff into the...
Yes, it's in.
Okay.